We'll start off tonight with prayer and pledge. I will be leading it for those that want to participate, please do so. Can we bow our heads? Heavenly Father, we come to unite, ask you to give us strength and guidance so that we go through this meeting with success and that we all come out victorious. Father, we ask that you cover our city and our residents, our staff, and our leaders as they do the tedious day-to-day work. Father, we ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Now we're going to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Seals.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Protam Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Braddock.
Present.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond is absent, and Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have eight members present and one absent.
Thank you so much. Good evening to everyone. Salute to our sorority sisters, also salute to the boy scouts. Is it boys? Tell me it's boys. Boy scout, okay, salute to you. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting. This meeting is being televised. I ask that everyone, including all of the councilmembers up on the podium with me, silence your phones and silence your iPads. Audience, if I can get you to do the same thing, I sure would appreciate it. It's Christmas time, I need a new phone, sir. Please don't let your phone be my new phone. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we have a few announcements. The first is, this is the last week for yard waste collection. Yard waste in containers or bags may be placed at the curb for collection on your regular trash day through this Friday. The convenience station will be open this Saturday, December 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. City residents can drop off items not picked up at the curb or other miscellaneous bulky items. The Public Works Building is a drop-off location where you may drop off your old holiday lights for recycling. Drop-off hours are Monday through Friday between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. The recycling drive is coordinated by the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority and runs through January 15th. The next city council meeting is next Monday, December 16th, at 6:30 p.m. And that takes us to public input.
Thank you. Individual will be called to the podium by a clerk. You have three minutes. Please get everything you need to say within those three minutes. I will look up at you when it gets close to it. I don't like cutting people off, so if you can keep it to the three minutes, I sure would appreciate it. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Joseph Morrison.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not sure if you can help me with this or not, but I've been trying to report murder of a child, Schmottick Brown. And as a police officer, he had an eyewitness to her being taken from a yellow house to a park to be dropped off at the church. That it was Kathy from, it was Kathy, my sister, she's not my sister, but she's one of the two. And that, um, that he said, if there was a blonde in the house that night, I said, yeah, it was Amy from across from the girl's home there. Then he had told me that he had an eyewitness saying that the lady, that the blonde and the lady carried the body from there to the church. Okay, this is an officer, it was in the news, that, he said, remember we had a talk? I said, okay. That she's also the Kathy from Detroit, that at the St. Vincent's Home scandal in the 1960s, that I'm a part of that. And that ten agents came there to identify a girl, Kathy, and she was still away, he said, it wasn't her, but it was, that they brought her there. They threw me off the slide, it hit my head in the concrete down below. I lost my memory for sixty-something years on that. And that was in the 1960s, behind St. Mary's Hospital. And that I had a MRI done, and they said, congratulations, normal brain shrink. And I said, remember my grandfather, he's a priest across from Lloyd Park, the church. And that he said, you'll remember when you have normal brain sugars one day, and he says, you have something new, that's going to have to tweak your memory. I don't know what he meant by that. Besides, the FBI called him and told him that I had some kind of tracking device in there. And then that, um, it just goes on and on. I was five years old there, I witnessed several different murders, even the little lady out of jail here, I was a little boy, I just shared the notice with me, you gotta take the keys. And I said, hey, I killed her in the drain here. That was in the jails down below here. And that they hung a lady in a wedding, when the wedding dress was serious. And the sheriff also had to buy his car, that he wouldn't open the car for me, and the truck says, I'm not going to move further with the kid. So all this has been going on, on top of Kathy from Detroit being the one that killed Schmottick Brown and all that. And I'm just, I'm reporting, so I'm not getting any help. So I came here looking for help on this. I don't know, I had an officer call me, said, yeah, my best detective is on, nobody ever calls you back, you know, give me a badge number. This is the second time I was going to come down here. This is, this time I came in to see if I could get help from y'all. I don't know if that's possible or not, but there's a lot more to be said too. I guess I got three minutes, dude. And this goes all the way back to the 60s, even I had to take over Kyle Hayes' attorney when she was prosecuting attorney, I'm the one that protected over when they killed her witnesses up in the 70s. And I went off to the Army and asked the FBI, came over, helped me sign papers and all that, so. I was going to call them for her and all that. This has been going on the same way, I just can't seem to get anywhere with it, though. It's murdering children, and even myself, losing my memory like that for that many years, being hit in the head involving these people. So all I can say right now, think of right now, I didn't write it down, I said, I was nervous about coming here and explaining it. It hurts, I mean, I can remember my head in the head, it hurt bad, and I just don't get anywhere with this. I don't know what to do.
Okay, so the appropriate department will get with you, and they'll let us know. What, they'll send us communication that they send you, so the appropriate department will get with you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just quite welcome.
Our next speaker is John Wisnewski.
Hello, good evening. I'm back again this month. Here last month about the sidewalk repair, the billing. I was told someone would be getting back to me, or they'd be looked into. No one's contacted me. I did get a bill for the interest. You charge an interest of 19.3%. It's a $2,020 bill, you're trying to charge $390 interest on it. That's like a predatory lending rate. I've got a couple estimates on the sidewalk, the low being from Agnew Concrete, $900 to $1,000, the high being from Mr. Aspott being $1,200, $1,500. You guys charged me $2,020. The tree, that they took a lot of roots out on. I don't believe anybody stopped by to inspect that. Like I say, the tree is directly east of my house, we got prevailing winds coming out of the west, it's a big tree. You guys weakened it when you tore out a bunch of roots. If and when that falls on my house, who's going to have to pay for that? I want that documented, that I've inquired about it. Basically, I just get, you know, I'm more disappointed. Like I say, you're overcharging, number one, I feel like I'm being extorted. And then the strong-arm tactics, you can't do nothing about it. When I spoke to Mr. Velazquez in engineering earlier in September, he told me, he believed it was five years interest-free to work it out on your taxes, but it's not. Like I say, it's 19.3% interest. That is just, I mean, that's, you know, that's terrible. You guys should feel bad about that. Other than that, I mean, someone needs to get, contact me and, you know, we need to talk it out and work it out. It just seems very unfair. It's not the way you should treat your citizens, your residents. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Somebody will contact you. Step, I need somebody to contact this individual and at least tell him something so that we, so that he can at least be at peace. I don't know if it's going to be what you want to hear, sir.
Well, fair, I got no problem paying a fair price.
Okay.
I mean.
So that, somebody will get a hold of you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Our next speaker is Jesus Medina.
He's in the hallway.
Can you just check the hallway? Onto Lucas Watkins.
Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak today on my behalf, myself and many other city residents that endured the special assessment bill for the sidewalk repair of Roll Call, SDW 25. In 2018, I reported the sidewalk heaving due to a city tree that was within the easement that caused significant damage to the roads and sidewalk. We asked the city to repair it, not knowing that this could cause, could be a responsibility, or our responsibility. To our surprise, after reporting it, we received a letter stating we must make appropriate repairs, or the city will take action. I was concerned, as not knowing what the cost might be. The estimate of, at that time, was $566. That was presented by the engineering, which I was okay with at that time. But they said it would be three to four years before that, they'd be able to come out and actually fix that. So during this time, I was approved to cut down the tree that caused the damage, at my expense, and made temporary repairs to the sidewalk with hydraulic cement to ensure the safety of the pedestrians, as I didn't want anyone to get hurt. So I took the precautionary measures to do so. This year, Consumers Energy came in to make gas line repairs, and the city sent me a letter stating for me to fix the sidewalk, or they would, but no invoice of cost or estimate was provided. To my surprise, the bill I received later was $2,078.60. That is expected to be paid in full within 30 days, or over five-year installments with 8% interest, equaling a total of $415.72 per year to be added to the next five years of property taxes. I would understand an inflation of 50%, but with it being a 253% increase on labor and materials, I found this outrageous, as the bills are more than city's residents' property taxes, and the five-year plan is more than what anybody generally makes per week living in the city here. So at this point, I'm basically asking the city to get, provide some kind of assistance as I received a statement in November 26th this year, and I have 30 days to make a come up with a determination whether I can get some assistance from the city to help me, help me with this situation. As like I said, the tree did cause the problem, that was on the city's side. And I took every, you know, ample way to try to make the correct improvements to keep that, you know, so no one would get hurt along the way. If it would have been the $500 and some odd dollars, or even $1,000, I would have been acceptable to that. But to see, you know, 253% increase, that's substantial for anybody in this room, I believe. So, at this point, I would just like to lastly ask, you know, when I could expect a decision on this matter, or hear anything back, as my window's closing, and the payment will be expected by Christmas. So, I thank you for your time, and I hope that you guys can assist me.
Thank you. Again, somebody will get a hold of you. You have my word.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Melanie Velasco.
Melanie Velasco, hello. I do have complaints on those sidewalks. There's tons of them all over, that are up, erased, all inappropriately, and huge trees, like 75 years old, they need to be removed. I may document that. But my walk the other day, I noticed that in front of the post office, it was not trebled. It's the U.S. Post Office. Da. It wasn't shovelled, and I'm pulling my buggy with some of my belongings, you know my wonderful life, not at my own demise. And tiny homes, I really think we need some tiny homes. I know there's some more homes are being built, I was told of, which is excellent, but the homeless really need someplace like 12 hours to sleep, 12 hours possibly to work, or volunteer in the community. I really think it could be a hub of tiny homes, and then fence all around it, where kids can play inside the hubs, and cars cannot hit kids, and have community rooms, little houses, laundry room, so forth. I got, I, it's all in my head. But anyway, that, and the sidewalks need to be outplowed earlier, because there are people that have to get out to go to work. I used to be one of those, have to leave from Chastening to go to Frankenburg at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, and, you know, other people got to come through Saginaw to do work, yeah. Yep, I've done all that kind of stuff, nursing assistant, direct care, county mental health train, I worked for a doctor. I've done a lot of stuff. Work-wise, that is. And I loved all my jobs. There's many of my clients out, it just took home, it's my own mom and dad, yeah, many of them beautiful. Trash being dumped all over our city, and these people, they know they're doing it, it's bottles, liquor bottles. I just, I get so sick when I see it all over the place, it's just absolutely disgusting. I like to catch the people and picket them, they need to be. Oh, Marquette and Kenrick Cars Drive Thru there, 45 to 50 miles an hour in the summertime. Do you know that? And that is a highly child activity area where they play. I was sitting, visiting my nephew, and a car, voomp! Scared the crap right out of me, I swear. It was ridiculous. There need to be speed signs and warnings, that they will get a fine if they speed through that residential, because I see many kids, and I know somebody who has a child out there. My nieces and my nephew play out there on their bikes, so. Not just my family, it's everybody else's family that live around there. I'm concerned for everyone. And when I get on city council, I'm going to be for the people, all the people, and even all the little people, definitely the little people, because they don't get a chance to speak. They gotta be heard too. Oh, and, uh...
Wrap it up, Ms. Melanie.
Oh, cables, the cable lines and the cable, and the cable, the phone and the cable box spitting all over the place, we gotta wrap that crap up too.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Melanie.
All right, thank you, and you have a lovely evening, and if I don't see you, have a wonderful Merry Christmas, and you know I love you.
Goodbye, Ms. Melanie, thank you.
All right, staying positive.
Our next speaker is Rhonda Farrell Butler.
My name is Rhonda Farrell Butler, and I am the first Vice President of the Saginaw Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. I am filling in for our President, Lisa Ingram, who's not present today. And I also have along with me, who will be speaking later, is our Chair for our Social Action Committee. We are here this evening to, first of all, to introduce our new members, councilmembers, to who we are as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and to re-associate ourselves with our current DST is a private nonprofit organization whose purpose is to promote sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action. We have over 1,000 chapters that span the globe. We were founded on January 13th, 1913, by 22 college-educated women at Howard University. We have over 350,000 initiated members. Two months after our founding, our organization was the only African-American organization that participated in the Women's Suffrage March that you hear about on March 3rd in D.C. in 1913. Our Saginaw chapter was chartered on October 28th, 1967, by 12 college-educated women, some of them who moved to this community after graduating from college, looking for jobs. And in that process, they joined the community to do the work and continue what Delta represents. One of our 12 members is still living in our community today. She will be 101 years old in March, and she makes sure that we are still doing Delta business. We are governed by our five-point programmatic thrust, which includes physical and mental health, economic development, international awareness and involvement, educational development, and the arm of our organization, which is social action. Again, thank you for welcoming us back this evening. And at this time, I'd like to bring forward, and I know you'll probably introduce her, but our Chair, who will pick up from where I left off. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Candace Thomas.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Candace Thomas, and I am a member of the Saginaw Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and I'm the Chair of our chapter's Social Action Committee. The legacy of our organization has been to positively impact our service areas via policies. Although we are involved in community service projects, such as feeding the hungry and clothing the needy, and have partnered with several local organizations, the crux of our work is to be a voice for the voiceless, the marginalized, and the disenfranchised by advocating for and against public policies. Since the chartering of our chapter over five decades ago, members of Saginaw Alumni Chapter have continued the legacy of our founders through our social action programs that we've implemented in this community, right here in your backyards. Our 2024 programs have included Delta Days at Saginaw High and Arthur Hill, of which over 80 juniors and seniors participated in civic lessons. They learned about the bond process and how they are benefactors of passing, of the passing of the bond 2020, which helped to build the new beautiful high school, Saginaw United, and the students engaged with community leaders from the legislative, executive, and judicial branches of local and state government. Last April, in recognition of Fair Housing Month, we hosted a town hall to bring awareness to the Michigan Fair Chance Access to Housing Bill that aimed to prevent landlords from using background checks to deny justice impacted people or those with prior felony convictions a fair chance to secure housing. With the most recent election cycle, we've launched our 2024 Get Out to Vote campaign, Your Vote is Your Voice, in which we engaged with over 2,214 voters living in two of the historically lowest voter turnout precinct areas here in Saginaw. And just last week, members of our organization advocated for the passing of the Michigan Voting Rights Act, also referred to as Senate Bills 401, 402, 403, and 404 in Lansing. On behalf of the Saginaw Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, under the leadership of President Lisa Ingram, we want to thank Council for your leadership, and in this community, and also your support of our programming. We also extend our right hand to you as a gesture of our commitment to continue to serve in Saginaw County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Loprina.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Joe Loprina. I am the 24, 25 President of the Saginaw Optimists Club. Coming to the Council to thank the Council for showing your support and dedication to our youth appreciation that we held in November this year. It was my first time doing something like that, recognizing almost 18 kids from different counties. We had Saginaw County, Saginaw County Wise, Birch Run, Birchport, Saginaw, Carlton, Saginaw Township. The way the kids got that many was by a counselor or a peer teacher in their district, and they got selected to come to get recognized by the Optimists, who does a lot of scenes behind the scenes, like giving out scholarships every year. We team up with Keehonda, giving out scholarships, two $500 scholarships we gave out in September. We messed up the check on one of the girls, but I wanted to personally invite the city council to our next meeting, to come to learn what the Optimists is about, and why are we here? Because what I'm asking as the President, as a young President, is because I'm looking for support from the city. If the city needs our support, I want to team up with the city council and move forward, because the way I see it in the news these days is all these shootings are going around in the city, and it's sad. I don't know what to do, as a young President, and as a young next school board member in Carlton Township, I will be serving that in January 2011. But I do have a Christmas gift for our Mayor, Brendan Moore. It's the President's, President Optimist's gift for you. I know, because I always use your theme, every, every meeting, I always say, use your theme. It's a new season, it's a new day, and, and we gotta continue moving on forward and bringing what the city needs. The city needs, the city's crying, it's time for everybody to, to support the city council. So I'm challenging every resident in the city of Saginaw, from here, Sawaki, Carlton, Tom, Birchport, to support the city, because the city's always supported events like Christmas and the parade, the Sigalamao Parade. So I'm asking that come to our next meeting. It's Thursday, and new, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina Swanton.
Good evening, my name's Tina Swanton. I'm the CEO with the Saginaw Community Food Club and Kitchen. It's nice to put some faces with some new names, and I look forward to getting to know those of you that I have not yet met. It's been a little while since I was last here with a Food Club ARPA update, so I'm excited to share a few things with you tonight. As some of you might know, we changed sites a few months back, so we will now be located at 310 Meredith, which is just off Washington, next to MMR. We spent this fall doing some soil testing and site preparation for the new site, and in November, we did a closing with the city for the purchase of that property. So again, I thank you for you and your team and working with us to secure that property. Following the closing, we went through the bid process to select our general contractor. I'm happy to announce that we will be working with Bronner Construction on this project. We have now submitted all reporting to show full funding for allocation for the ARPA, as the timeline did require the end of 2024, and I promised I would make that happen. So after the first of the year, you will start to see more site prep with plans of breaking ground, which will be as soon as the weather allows, so most likely the end of March, start of April. So the next time you will hear from me will most likely be to invite you to groundbreaking, which I could not be more thrilled about. This has been a roller coaster ride of a project, and we are just ready to fully join this community and to serve the people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Michael Thompson.
Good evening, Mike Thompson, 625 North Fayette. I always appreciate the chance to participate, so thank you. The reason I'm speaking tonight is I believe the Council might want to consider the option, in addition to removing the property tax caps next year, of seeking an income tax increase. However, to do that, the state legislature or the state officials would have to enable that ballot proposal for you. And if you wait till January, the Republicans will be in, and they're going to tell you no. So I'm asking if you would just pass some type of resolution tonight to contact your state rep and your state senator and ask them to enable an election in 2025. And then if you don't want to do it, you just cancel it, but at least you have the option to do it. If you don't do anything tonight, you'll be sitting at your planning session next January. Maybe that income tax would have been a decent idea, but it's too late now. So that is why I am suggesting you would do that tonight, to get state authorization in case next year you want to ask for an income tax in addition to the property tax. The income tax would give you $5.5 million a year. Lifting the caps would give you $2.2 million. That's two and a half times more money for you to try to restore public safety, maybe give recreation a little seed money. The main thing I would do is get rid of that trash fee, $240 a year, that is almost as bad as the caps in punishing poor people. I remember how that got in, it was the outer west side wanted that, because they didn't want to pay the millage for the trash, so they changed it to a fee. So that would be the first thing I would spend the money on. Then I would put a fire station back on the southeast section of the city, which doesn't have a fire station for the last 10 years. And the third thing I would do is give recreation some seed money to help them write grants. The income tax has not been raised since 1989, it was established in 1964. How many times have property taxes been raised since then? So I believe it would be far less burdensome plus... plus you would get more money for doing it. And I'll be here after the meeting if anybody has any more questions for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
We will start tonight with Councilman Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate you bringing that information in. Maybe we can do something with that because we know we need the taxes raised here in the city of Saginaw, or the tax cap lifted anyway. I'd like to thank everybody who came here and spoke this evening, especially everybody from the civic organizations who's trying their best to make Saginaw a better place for everybody to live, work, and play. And I'd like to welcome the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts here to the city council meeting so you guys can get your next badge. And I'd like you guys to know that we got a lot of people that's been presidents that's been involved in scouting. Guys probably know that too. You know, I, I am too sick of killings, the shootings, and all the negative stuff that goes on in the city of Saginaw. But can you imagine how much more negative stuff would go on if we didn't have these civic organizations here helping out? So we need to really thank them for doing all the work that they do in the city of Saginaw because weren't for them, it wouldn't be people like me or other people sitting even at the city council meetings or either involved in organizations that I'm involved in, like the Big Brothers and Sisters Program. You know, it don't take everybody to engage a child, but everybody that do engage a child, you improve the whole city when you're talking to that individual and telling them, you know, things that'll make them grow and be better citizens. I have opportunity, some kids in my neighborhood have opportunity. I don't know if it's opportunity for me, but they have a tendency to come by my house and ask my wife for my snacks. And in the meantime, when they do that, I'm putting them to work. I got them cutting grass, helping them fix their bikes, teaching them how to do smart electrical repairs. We even made a couple of boards for pipe fitting. You know, and they'd be amazed when you see the lights that come on in their eyes when they shoot it, when you see them have to work a tool or grab some parts and screw them together and learn how to do that. You really, it really does something for them. I got one little kid in my neighborhood. I'm going to give him a toolbox this year because he's really been astute. So I'm going to give him a toolbox for Christmas this year. And I'm sure he's going to be well lit up come summertime trying to fix everything in his house and for the rest of the neighbors. You know, to make me feel good inside whenever you can engage a kid and make them feel better. Because whenever we make them feel better, it makes the world feel better. Kids already got enough stuff going on with all the crap that goes on in school with peer pressure and trying to get their parents to buy them the special clothes and all that kind of stuff like that. And some kids have low self-esteem because they can't get what the other kids are getting. So it's always good, just to plant a little seed in them to see if it'll grow, you know, for tomorrow to help everybody else out. So thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostag.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to start out the evening tonight by welcoming everybody to the chamber. And also too, I had the opportunity this weekend to have a celebration. So I want to wish my neighbor's grandfather and my neighbor's father, Clinton McMillan, a 100th anniversary, birthday. So we celebrated his birthday this weekend. It was a lot of fun. Also too, I want to welcome troop, Boy Scout Troop 366 to the chamber tonight. And I meant to, to mention that we had met with you all over last month with our deputy chief, who's also in the chamber tonight with us. And it was a lot of fun meeting with you over, I don't know, maybe it was a couple of weeks ago. So welcome to the chamber tonight. And I know you guys are working on your citizen community merit badge, so, so welcome. And also, just, I want to mention too, just an announcement that for the Soup Kitchen, the East Side Soup Kitchen here in Saginaw, they are always looking for donations for coats, toiletries, and underwear and socks. And so if you have anything like that, please just, you can drop that off at their, at the center over here on Genesee Avenue. Anywhere is from 9:00 AM till 3:00 PM in the afternoon. Not really much that I have this afternoon, Mayor. Just even a few more announcements. Just that the lead organization is having a taco fundraiser, and that is going to be from Saturday, December 14. And that is going to be November 30. And I'm losing my, Mayor, I really don't have much to say tonight. I'm just going to end right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next, we have Councilman Bradock.
It's my turn. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank everybody for that came and spoke also. And just, I have much to say either, but just to double down on what they said. As far as our public safety, we had some gun violence over the, over the weekend. So we, you know, just, you know, we just have to be aware and pay attention to the people around us, you know, also. The, you know, it's getting cold outside, so y'all hanging on to those old coats and sweaters and flannels, you know. Get them to the shelters or get them to the, you know, get them donated out there. There's people that need them also. And so, but just Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy Holidays. My birthday over the holidays, I just have to put that out there. And so that's all, that's all I have, Mayor.
We know you was going to get that birthday in there, didn't we? Next, we have Councilwoman Wiggins.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you for all the participants tonight and the Boy Scout Troop for showing up. We appreciate that. I hope you get a lot out of this, and it's kind of interesting to see the comments and what happens here. So I appreciate you being here. Again, my heart's go, my heart goes out to those who have lost people over the, this last weekend and, you know, this past month. Our hearts and prayers are going out to those families. It's disheartening, but we know that there are a lot of good things in this community. And we want to focus on those, but also extend help and our, our love to those families. There was mention of the trash on the streets by Melanie Velasco. That, that also bothers me a lot. It's one thing that is, is something that everyone can participate in. Whenever I take my kids to the park or we go to the store or whatever we do, I always say, make the place a little better than you left it. If you see something on the ground, pick it up, throw it away. You know, it helps the community. It's just, it just helps everyone. I happen to do that. It's just a normal thing that I do. And someone stopped me and was almost in tears saying, that was great. I've never seen that before. And I was like, you're just picking up trash. But it is a big thing that you can immediately affect the community with. Again, this weekend, I got to hang out with Councilman Ostag at the Neighborhood House. And that was a good event. It was an event for the kids, and they had pancake breakfast, Santa Claus, and Dr. Seuss read to the kids. And I got to tour the, the facility again. Hadn't been there since I was a kid. Honestly, I used to live down the street on Russell. And just to see the, the work that's been done there and the, how much they reach out and meet basic needs of kids every day, Monday through Friday, from feeding them to helping them with homework to, you know, just making sure they have a safe place to be. It was a blessing to be able to see that and experience that. And I got to take my grandson and my bonus kids, and it was a great time. So I appreciate everything that's happening there. Again, I don't have a whole lot to say, but again, thank you guys for being here.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you and welcome to your city council meeting. I'm so glad to see you all. And so I won't forget you all. Have a beautiful rest of the holiday. I'd like to, I don't have much today myself either, but I'd like to send condolences out to the family, loved ones, and friends of Julian Gonzalez Araro, who lost his life this past few days ago. Also Dee Galvin and my Isha Barnes, who was in a tragic car accident. So I'm sending condolences to their family and loved ones. And it don't hurt to just send a text, send a card, you know, to some of our citizens in Saginaw who have family members that have loss of life. Most of my questions will probably be for the city manager a little later on. So again, thank you all so much, and you all have a blessed rest of the day. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Councilwoman Missil.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for everyone that came out today. Thank you for all the speakers to the Boy Scouts. I used to volunteer for Boy Scouts when I was a teenager. One of the first places that I volunteered as a teenager because I was forced to from my mother. But I learned a lot at the Boy Scouts. I thought it was the coolest thing, you know. I was mad that I couldn't be a Boy Scout, but never knew that there was a Girl Scout at that time. But I also want to say thank you to the city staff. You guys are awesome. You guys work so hard. I appreciate everything you do for us, new people, new council members. You guys get information out to us so quickly. You respond very quickly. Thank you for everything you do. Keep it up. Don't stop. And I just want to say, because I don't have a lot, but we are in a season of giving. This is a season of giving gifts. And it's almost, you know, we give gifts to our loved ones and to our friends. But I just challenge us as citizens of Saginaw, just go beyond your inner circle, even your outer circle. Go beyond this year. That's the message I want to leave with you all today. Be the gift this year. Be the gift for our community. And why not, why not do it? Because that could be the change that we, we need in our community. We need you all to help us to make this change. And if we start within ourselves in becoming the change agents we want to see, then the change will start ricocheting around our city. So be the gift this year, guys. And it's going to make a positive effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thanks for yous who they gave a speech. Just kind of makes us aware of what's going on in the city. Sometimes we don't know that until we hear from the citizens. So thanks for bringing that to my attention, to know what's going on. And also, I'd like to send a condolences to my friend Monica Arroyo that lost her son, Julian Chano Arroyo Gonzalez, this Saturday. If anybody knows anything, sees something, say something. It could be your loved one that has got hurt or killed. You can contact the Saginaw Police Department, 989-759-1288. And just continue to keep them in your prayers. Also, there is coming up the 21st. I know it's hard times for everybody as well for the holidays. Santa's Workshop Party here at 701 Hus Avenue, Saginaw, at the New Beginning, MBO Church. They didn't, it'll be the 20, December 21st, 2024. Children must attend to receive one free gift, so come on out. They're going to have Santa there from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. So if you know anybody in need or just want to go and get in the holiday spirit, come on out. And also, yes, East Side Soup Kitchen, which I'm the vice president for, we're always looking for donations for hats, scarves, boots, anything warm. Especially, we get a lot of children too with the holidays coming up. They'll be off of school, so we will get a lot of visits from them that week or so that they're off. So if you guys want to come on by, we're always looking for volunteers. We appreciate it. And like she said, it's a time of giving, you know. It's not about always receiving. It's about giving back to the community. I just went to the Saginaw Commission on Aging and donated to a couple seniors. So I'm looking forward to go, possibly Thursday, to go help wrap those items and can't wait to see their faces to get something. Because sometimes we forget about our elders, and they're the whole reason why we're here today is because of them. So we can't ever forget about them. Always check on them. I have a few clients. I do do Medicare insurance, and it's so sad that they have kids that live across the street or close by and won't even go and take care of them. And I'm like, wow, I can't believe that. I couldn't imagine doing that to my parents. So if you see somebody, your neighbors, just be respectful to your elders. You know, they're here for a reason still, very wise, a lot of knowledge and wisdom to share. And you can learn a lot from them, and I know I have, and it's helped me grow and shaped me into the person I am today, just to sit there and talk to them. I mean, they're just lonely, some of them, you know. And so if you can do something like that, that'll make their day. And you, like I said, you'll learn a lot from them. That's all I want to say. Good night. God bless.
Best, but not least. Not much to say tonight. First, I'd like to thank all of the council people for being visible in the community. That means a lot. Everybody know Brenda, but I want everybody to know everybody up on this platform. When you step in the room, I need them to address you as well. One of the things that is getting ready to happen, it's always, for those that don't know, I do a Santa's workshop. I've been doing it for the past four years. You know, any child between the ages of, I think I got about thirty more slots. So thirty people between the ages of zero and 12. And if anybody that's listening to my voice would like to donate some toys, everything but guns. You can donate me anything but guns, no guns. This is a, this is a no-gun Christmas this year. We're going to give away gifts. We're also going to have Santa come next week. I'll be able to give you the exact date. I still need thirty more kids. I guess you've wondered, how many kids do I have? It's over, it's, right now, it's over 200 kids. So we're cutting it off at 250, and we plan to give every child a gift. So if anybody would like to help, you are more than welcome. My council members, when I get ready to do it, I hope that you all will be present so that you can see the smiles on their face. This is not something that I just started. I think I get a thrill out of doing it. Get sick every year, but I have a thrill in doing it. Councilwoman Missil says something that makes a lot of sense. I was always told that if you keep your fist tight, you get nothing. If you open them up and raise them towards the sky, your blessings will flow. For those that know me like Joe say, it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing has already come our way. So for my public speakers, I know that you individuals are having problems with the sidewalk stuff. I hope that we can do some type of resolution because I don't want nobody walking out of here saying they ain't do nothing again. If we don't know, we can't do nothing. And when you bring me a problem, please come up with a solution. Help me. Help me to understand how to do it. Mr. Michael, we've had that conversation, and I've talked to Tim about it. We were, I'm all gone, but got to figure out if it's worth it. Because I'm tired of taxing y'all. I don't want to tax y'all for nothing else. We paying up bills. Some of us are barely making it. We can't get in tax. If we keep getting taxed, we're going to have people walk away. That's not what we want. But my Boy Scouts, right on. Madam Clerk.
Next, we'll hear reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, I do want to, something we mentioned before. Me and the staff did meet with Councilman Balls to talk about working with our contractors and trying to make sure that we get job information out to city residents. So we're going to keep working on that. Potentially, we'll try to work with some of the other companies that are hiring. So we recognize that a lot of these people need employees, and a lot of our people in the city need jobs. So we're going to try to put something together to help get people lined up and get applications in. The annual audit is just being completed and will be presented at our next meeting. So I want to thank staff and the controller's office for working on that. And we'll have our independent auditors, yo and yo, here at our next meeting to present that. We are also continuing to work with SVSU on our sister city relationship with Barry, Ontario. So they are going to be working with local universities in Barry and also throughout Ontario for some training partnerships and education partnerships. One thing we identified with Barry to work on is they're very interested in alternative energy, health, technology, health education, and other education and training opportunities in Saginaw. So we'll continue to work with them on that. And I do want to echo what some of council members said about civic organizations helping out and highlight that with the recreation portion. As you know, we used to have a recreation department. We don't have a recreation department anymore, but we've had a lot of organizations step up. And one that highlighted, we received their newsletter this week, was the Urban Racket Sports Foundation. You recall, they worked on the Garber Courts renovation and raised, I think, over $2 million as the organization to put that together. So I just wanted to mention them again since they were out there. And they are having winter 25 tennis and pickleball, youth tennis and pickleball at the YMCA, January through April. So check that out. It's a great organization, and they continue to do that all summer outside at those courts. The income tax, I want to mention that we are at the cap for the state of Michigan. So the state of Michigan has a cap of the percent income tax that you can charge based on population. And when it was implemented, we're at one and a half. on population, and when it was implemented, we're at one and a half percent, and you're allowed to charge half of that for non-residents, so we are at that amount that's allowable in state legislation, so we could not increase that anyway. That's why you saw us typing real quickly, to double check that before the update. So, Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Does anyone have any questions for our city manager? Yes.
Yep, I do. Just, I know we've had a lot of sidewalk questions and things that have been brought to the council, and I have done some research with municipalities that do surround us. Some of them actually do kind of share the burden of the trees that do reside, that do, are in the right of way. So fellow council members that are here at the table, kind of think this over, and maybe we could start to share that burden with our residents, either half the cost of the trees that are in the, in the sidewalk causing the issues. I know we don't have this tonight, but we could actually consider changing our ordinance, so something to think about. So I did check with the city of Frankhamouth, they actually do pick up the entire cost, so if the tree is in the right of way, they will pick up that cost for the resident. So something to think about. So that's all I have.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask, is it possible, or I'm sure it's possible, to get a upper update for next meeting, next week, you know, good, bad, ugly, and different, whatever's going on, whatever went on to this particular point, because I know we're still at the December 31st, and just want to make sure everything, all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. So can we get that? Okay, and also, a couple meetings ago, if wasn't the last one, we spoke about, I spoke rather, in regards to the, a job fair, so is that going anywhere? Has that gotten any legs at all at this particular time?
Yeah, that's what we were, we met about, and we talked to with Councilman Balls and the staff. We're looking at doing something in the spring for that, because that's when a lot of the contractors are gonna be hiring. We hope to potentially work with Corning as well, if you recall, they're gonna start hiring a lot of people, probably after the first of the year, and then we'll also have our own city jobs. Remember, we had a city job fair at one time, so the more we talk about it, the bigger it's becoming, but that's a good thing, so we'll, we'll keep working on that. We'll hope to have something maybe in, in March, I think.
Okay. And what's the likelihood, I think, I, I know I mentioned it before, what's the likelihood, and I know you said you'd have to have people that are interested in putting monies out in regards to tiny homes. What's the likelihood, or something like that, in, in a city this size, demographics?
So you can have, the way our zoning is, you can have the, I think the typical tiny homes aren't within our zoning, which would be the movable homes, so what we focused on when we've done it, or looked at doing it, is just smaller footprint homes, and that is similar to what, what Covenant is doing now. Those might be a little bit bigger than, than that initial plan. We looked at doing that with CDBG at 2018, 2019, I think it was, and then COVID came about, but if there were a partner organization that were interested in doing that, we can help with, get grants from NISTDA or different organizations, or they could try to go through Block Grant again.
Is that something we would possibly look at?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, if someone had a plan for it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes, I got a question.
Yes.
Would it be proper for anybody in the city that know of anybody that got a job, or I'm talking about from technical to college graduate to janitor's jobs, to let the city manager know about it, when we have our jobs here, we can try to include everybody, be intentional about getting people hired in the city of Saginaw?
Definitely. Yeah, we can, we'll work with anybody that wants to participate in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk.
We are at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the TV, and on the city webpage, and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved, or?
It's been moved in support. Do I have any exceptions?
I just got a question, I asked for number eight.
Number eight, any others? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number eight is to approve the contract with Spence Brothers for $6,94,100 for the Hancock CSO and Parking Structure Rehabilitation Project for the Public Services Department Engineering Division. That was Councilmember Balls.
Since we got these big bucks, I see we got the big guys coming up here. That's glad to see. I mean, I seen six million dollars for the parking structure. Are they gonna get rid of the whole parking structure that's gonna patch it cause it's seen, I mean, like we should be able to get a whole parking structure for six million.
You get half of it. So half, half of, three billion dollars of it is, is parking structure, the other three million dollars of it is to repair. Underneath that parking structure is the repair basin, that we used to treat the wastewater before it goes into the river on big rain events. It needs a lot of structural help, so it come out about half, about fifty-fifty on cost split. The three, that's my whole plus right here. Three million dollars of that's gonna be hitting wastewater buckets.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of people don't know, is it how many million gallons? There's a combined sewer overflow that's underneath that parking structure, so there's much to work on, from what you can't see as to what you can see, so it's not just the parking deck and structure, it's a lot of other stuff, because that's basically the roof to the CSO basin as well.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was, I was curious, man, I know that's a lot of money for a parking structure, so we got a lot of BS down, I'm below it.
Yeah, no, we're, the bids are coming in, we had an estimate of about seven and a half million. Fortunately, a couple years ago, we probably would have been paying eight, ten million on that. Fortunately, we're starting to see, we're getting to see more competitive bids, and, but prices have doubled and tripled over the last four to six years on just about everything.
Is it because of the concrete too, right? That was a big issue too? That's why it's more expensive?
Hopefully we get some people that live in the city working on those projects, so they can pay some one and a half percent taxes instead of twenty-seven-five, so.
Sign them up.
Yeah, I'm just saying, wherever we get people working in the city is always good for the city, y'all.
Well, and that's actually part of the bid structure, that David Spence was able to take advantage of the way we have our bid structure, that if they're within five percent, because they're in the city of Saginaw, if they will match the low, they ended up getting it, so that's, that's been great.
So that mean they should be the first one to try to get some people living in the city working.
Well, and we're hoping they will be one of the contractors that'll be at the job fair that we're gonna be working on putting on in February, March, so we're trying to bring as many contractors to that as possible.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you. That's it, thank you. I can make a motion to be approved, number eight, please.
Second. It's been moved to second, any more discussion? Councilman Balls, you got your wish, it's coming true. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are on to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have anyone who would like to report any committee reports? No one. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to ordinance introduction. We have one on the agenda. It's to amend the official city map to rezone 2419 Mackinac Street from B1 Local Business District to R3 Low Density Multiple Dwelling Residential District.
I need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This will be laid over.
Finish your vote, she, you just, did the aye.
I'm sorry.
You gotta finish your votes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Now, this will be laid over. It's a charter provision.
First one to state law.
It's a state law, I'm sorry.
On to unfinished business. We have one item. It's to approve the professional services agreement with Placer Labs Incorporated for $23,000 for Placer AI data software for the Neighborhood Services and Inspections Department, Planning and Economic Development Division.
It's been moved in support. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Seals.
Yes.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Councilmember Braddock.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have seven yes and one no, that motion is approved. And that takes us to miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions that need to come before the council?
I don't know if it's proper, but I would like to make a motion to what Mr. Thomas was talking about as far as the vote's concerned. If it's proper with the city, I would like for us to make a motion to approve lifting the tax cap, and asking the state, will they help us out with that?
I'm looking at the attorney on this one.
I am too.
So the, the state of Michigan, actually the Michigan Legislature, through Representative O'Neil, fortunately, just introduced some legislation. Bill, House Bill 6160 was crafted with the specific purpose of eliminating a tax cap in any jurisdiction that might have one, but specifically to aid Saginaw. So that's, that's currently pending legislative approval. That was just introduced recently.
If council would like to support that, you could have a motion like that and direct the manager to write a letter of support for that legislation?
That's fine. But I was wondering, do we need, do we need to show our support by doing the same thing here, and send it on to him, because like he said, we may have issues in the state of Michigan with some politicians were lifting it too, not only in the federal government, but even in the state government. You know, during the climate of the people that's coming in next year, so I was wondering, do we need to make that motion this year to get it on our books? I would like to do that, so we can get it here in 2024, that we support that motion too, just in case. Just in case.
So, wait, I want to make sure that we get the motion right. Say your motion again, because I mean, I'm not writing.
I think he needs to withdraw the motion that he made and just restate a new one, because the first one didn't have a second, and he just started approving lifting the tax cap. So if you want to just withdraw that one and restate what you want to say.
So would we suggest a motion to support the, the legislation that was introduced?
That's fine. That's fine.
You all right with that?
I'm all right with that.
So a second is all right?
Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? No questions, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, any more motions?
Motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm gonna hold them here, because they acting crazy, I'm gonna hold them here. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, nay. Good night, everybody, have a good night.